Okay. I just started the design. I think the, uh, my fellow is the app because we obviously get to find out the item. The, uh, the bottom one. There's lights on every box or that side. Okay, so. He's on his way. Go ahead and get started.
All right, since my phones don't work, we need to speak loudly and slowly and try to speak clearly through masks. It's gonna be a challenge, so. I mean, six o'clock, we'll call a meeting, orderly rise for the public agenda. I'd like to read this to the line of the United States of America. And to the Republic where we just stand. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, please. Dan?
Here.
Oh.
Here.
Here.
Done.
Here.
Gary?
Here.
Sure, here. Item number three, does anyone have a reason to abstain for a financial or a non-financial contribution interest?
I do not have, no.
No.
I do not either. Item number four is approval of the agenda. There has been a request to add, um, a letter received from the Department of Revenue concerning, uh, equalization boards. And I would like to add that as item nine A, so that we can get our folks who are waiting to speak out with here and. So nine A, Department of Revenue letter. Are there any other amendments to the agenda?
Madam Chairman, I, I didn't think we were supposed to add items to the agenda per the state's attorney's guidance.
I believe we are allowed to add items, but we cannot take action on those items.
That's my understanding.
I, I, I thought when we, we discussed this last year, and his recommendation was he wouldn't advise we even add items a, as well. I realize we're not gonna take action, but, um, it, I, I don't know, is ours, do we have a state's attorney rep in the audience? I guess I can't see on the camera. What's her advice? Should we add something to the agenda, or should we wait till next meeting?
I'm, I'm not aware of whatever you want to advise. I'm not, I'm not aware of anything that we have in the office.
We've had items to the agenda for five or six, six years. I think as long as we don't take action, um, this could be brought up in Commissioner Updates.
Quickly, yep. So it, it really would be the same thing as bringing it up during the Commissioner Updates, it's just not official on the agenda.
Yeah, I, from what I remember, the state's attorney advising us last year is that, uh, well, last year is that, he advised us not to add anything to the agenda at all, uh, because it's not noticed. I realize we're not taking action, but, uh, that's what I recall. So I, I think maybe it'd be better to bring it up at Commissioner Updates, might be better. But I'm willing to do what the board requests.
Is it a timing thing? Are you just saying you want to father up the agenda?
It's just, it's a notice.
It's, it's just a letter of notice that you received and, uh, would like to make it public, so?
Well, the issue with things on the agenda.
Yes.
It's a, was a notice to.
So if you're, if you're comfortable, will we answer your permission or how? Yeah, maybe you could do that. All right, we'll do it that way then.
I think I'd like you to check with Rob.
I will do that. I will send something to all. So essentially, we're gonna be doing the same thing. Uh, do I have a motion to amend the, or approve the agenda?
Approve. Second.
I have a motion by Healy, second by Kettering, to approve the agenda as presented for the discussion. All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, nay. Motion carries, agenda is approved. Now's the time for public comments. There's a few listed there.
Yes.
So Gary Swenson and Boffley.
You think it's about what we're talking, just talking about?
Boffley.
All right. Those are all of the presidential votes, these, and the family, or all. Everybody came to this somewhere. From the family. I don't look it up today, the agenda. We have, item number twelve, second reading of the proposed amendments to the May 2020 versus 2016 for 20.6. That's the temporary zoning ordinance that you guys passed earlier in the year. Looking around here, I'm kind of literally, I'm not in a public forum in present, not all electronically or where it is. Obviously, this is not an all-time. I looked at all the other amendments in the agenda, variances, something like that. See, no problem going forward with that. Just as the only ordinance that we got moving for, uh, till the next election, so you want to be on side of it. I really think the public should be able to hear in person to speak their mind. Right now, you got farmers in the field playing, they're probably not gonna stop their work, finding out what we're talking about down here. Uh, you got changes coming up on the, the variances for Halloween. I don't know if you guys done your, uh, bookwork or not, when the zoning ordinance first came into effect, everybody thought it was half, the highest high, everything. When you counted it up. The first artists they had, who's going to learn, so they were gonna back. Riverside Acres, the Legere. And it was on the height of buildings, second area building, height, length, whatever. Because one neighbor didn't want somebody building a shed, that's gonna cut off their sunlight, and then, um, other, you know, um, they, they consider essential of their property, invaluable of their property. Those people should be able to come in here, just speak their mind. An article in the paper saying we're gonna be changes, doesn't tell the story. We're gonna have that, the spread, what the change is gonna be, the public's knowledge is gonna help. But going, hey, goes a neighbor, goes deep, and helps me on the shed, twice as big as his house. Because he's got the lot, and he's having a contract. I don't know what that's in this. I understand what you're saying, but you don't have contact with the neighbor that you use. I think that probably not there has the right to speak their mind, probably not. This is not the way to do it. We've got maybe four empty chairs here, not eight. We usually have different packs, people standing in the hall. This one office, fully changed, the kind where everybody can come in there and speak their mind. It's July, August, what's the hurry? This is the last of seventeen years. For this, probably seven months. You got time, it don't hurt. I don't know any crisis unless you guys know something we don't know, let's throw it up. We can wait till this over and we'll get back to ready to meet before we turn around, put them on a timer. What are the jobs you go to? Thank you for your time. I guess this isn't, I'm a very good voice, so I'm gonna put this out. Uh, my topic is China is the enemy. China has unleashed a virus on the world, and they're not an enemy, and they have always been an enemy. If you don't remember Korea, after the fifty-four thousand two hundred and sixty soldiers were killed there, after the North, South Korea were almost pushed back, Communist China jumped in with thousands and thousands of troops and pushed the cars are almost back into the sea. Communist China is not our friend. Yet lawyers, bankers, businessmen, farmers, do business with China. They send them pork chops, they send them grain. And if you condone this communist country, you're guilty by association. You're guilty by association and condone the fifty-four thousand two hundred and sixty soldiers that died in Korea in only three years. It took from nineteen fifty-nine to nineteen seventy-five in Vietnam to kill fifty-eight thousand four hundred and seventy-nine. It only took three years to kill fifty-four thousand two hundred soldiers. China is the enemy. China is the enemy. And if you condone it, this is guilty by association.
All right, any other? Any other public comment that we'd like you made? Public comment is not a part of this.
I probably, uh, agree with Mr. Swenson's, uh, comments about China. However, that revenue, that's what the public comment period is for, and I object to those kinds of statements.
On to item five, approval of minutes from May five, twenty twenty. Are there any corrections to the minutes?
Madam Chairman, I, I had a correction to the minutes on, uh, hold on. Uh, action two zero one eight nine C. Uh, I guess I would, if I had my choice, I'd like it to read, um, um, that, uh, uh, we, we approved the property development proposal on three ten Pearl Street, nine hundred East Eighth Street, and eight nineteen Birch Road. On the condition that, um, the property is to be developed in no less than three years. And when eight nineteen Birch, uh, Road comes into county possession, it is transferred to the city of Yankton. It basically says the same thing, but that, that was actually my motion. I think it's important that we have in there that when the county gets possession of eight nineteen Birch Road, it is transferred to the city, because we don't actually own that property yet. That was an important part of why we approved it the way we did. And we don't wanna be stuck with, and I don't assume we will be, with eight nineteen Birch Road when it does become available.
So the property development proposal says everything that you just stated. So it's outlined in the proposal that was approved.
But I, 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 the way I read it, the motion should be the motion that I made. Should it not be? I know it says the same thing, but that was the motion that I made.
Uh, go ahead and see. Well, that's what I would think, that what is in the proposal, what's not to be decided. The bunch said that in the proposal, we have approved, you guys approved, which is what we're supposed to say. You remember that discussion, Dan, during the meeting?
What's that?
You remember?
I, I can't hardly hear you guys, so.
Do you remember the discussion during the meeting?
Yes.
Where we decided just to refer to the proposal, because everything was listed in the.
Okay. I, I can go along with that then, that's, that's fine. I just, that, that didn't match the motion that I made, that's why I bring it up.
Are there other additions or corrections to the, uh, minutes?
The, the only, Madam Chairman, again, the only problem with that, though, is that the proposal didn't have in there that if those properties aren't developed in, um, those properties needed to be developed in three years, that was added as a condition of the motion.
And that's why it stated in the motion in the minutes with the three years, so that part was added to the minutes.
Okay. But it, but it should, it should say properties, not property. Like, it should be plural, as in all three properties, not a single property. I just wanna make sure the minutes accurately reflect what happened.
So Kathy said she can certainly change property to.
Okay, I'm, I'd be fine with that then.
All right.
I'd move approval of the minutes with the correction.
Is there a second?
Sorry.
I have a motion by Flemish, second by Kettering, to approve the minutes with the one correction of changing the word property to properties. Further discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Dan, did you vote?
Yes, I voted aye.
All opposed, nay. And goes its theme, most passes, and it's approved. Item number six, we'll start with claims, are there any questions on the claims presented?
They had a couple pretty good sites bills to, uh, to, uh, to hear of the people. Only fifty-six hundred dollars to move up the bar. That major changes to the system or it's, uh, team.
Uh, is that what we're speaking about?
I believe what the, uh.
That's the contract or what's on it?
Fifty-six ninety, fifty-six ninety. They've been having, just been in contact with me, they didn't have a body for hot water, so. Uh, they have it for a long time. A lot of times it works fine, let's say, through each, then Monday morning. So I think that will, I'm running a test too. Yeah, and they receive what they're doing for, or. That's great, they consider any rate, so I think it's like.
Yeah, yeah. What is that gone to?
Any other questions on the claims? I have another ten, a motion to approve the claims.
Right, everything else, it looks like, it's just the rule of the game here. Um, we're not, so I can just assume it is coming.
I have a motion by Kettering, second by Healy, to approve the claims as presented for the discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion carries, claims are approved.
Uh, yeah, well, she was saying that all of these.
Auditor, treasurer, report, and full capacity board, let's make those together.
Second.
I have a motion by Healy, second by Flemish, to approve the auditor, treasurer, report, and full capacity board for the discussion. All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, nay. Kerry's report, sir. Auditor Office employee job decision.
Um, I was impressed, or I would ask that, to question about girlfriend and fiancee. That she is, um, doing the commitment. And, um, to have added on, you know, some job to the regular circle. Does that mean that, can I see maybe right now for that will up to twenty seventy-three for four and a half weeks?
Any discussion on the request?
Over approval, second.
I have a motion by Kettering, second by Healy, to approve, um, promoting valley, uh, to. Further discussion.
Say, ma'am. Do you know if anybody was in here working on anything?
All right, since there's not a further discussion, we have a motion on the table, all in favor, signify that I say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay.
Second.
Motion carries.
This is right here, yeah.
Moving on to malt beverage licenses.
Come back.
There are many.
See, Chris said.
Individual or? Are there any questions on?
We're choosing stuff on this one here. Did anybody put kind of papers up front there at all?
Yeah, they're quite, like, we're in the, you know, we sort of just. Not the under that's why we're, also, we're in the commission of the time to give this request.
Hopefully, they're all telling me because they wish to. I think there was some time. I did talk to Sherri about this, but, um, and I asked you, my sister, when you got a complaint, you went out there and visited establishment. Were they in violation? And he said, the one establishment initially was unstood, and then they, um, came into alignment with, um, what was, um, passed by our county ordinance. And the establishment that everyone had a great deal of concern with, he said, when they entered the premises, that they were not in violation of the six-foot distancing and less than ten people. Uh, even on the parking lot showed many vehicles in there. Um, but he said, every time they got a call, they did not find it violation at initial visit. I know there was a lot of complaints before we actually passed the county ordinance. Um, and technically, those complaints, we probably can't have them before that point, because we were not enforcing them.
Are we approving these one at a time, Madam Chairman, or all together, or?
No, it'll be my motion.
All right, I guess I'd make a motion to approve, um, the malt beverage licenses.
I have a motion by Flemish, second by Swenson, to approve the applications as presented, further discussion. All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Application served. Moving on to item number seven, a right-of-way granted.
Pretty simple, uh, it's, uh, here, ballpark, south of primary fifty-two. I brought it to the, eight for mine. Not even actually working in the right of way, they want fours, hundred. Talking to McRoy, you're actually not even second sheet, I'll be in the right of way. Or I under the, or.
Any questions, Roy?
Over approval of the question for the recording.
I have a motion by Kettering, second by Healy, to approve the right-of-way for LaCroy. Further discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Dan, do you wanna vote?
I, I said aye.
Oh, sorry, I didn't hear you. All opposed, nay. Motion carries, right of way is approved. Thank you. All right, item number eight, mosquito abatement. For leach.
I sent it in the founder, I believe, here, and signature. Sorry.
Just a general motion for all of them. All right, so we just need a general motion to approve all the contracts as one. Just the annual, you know, annual.
Same one, great state, same.
I have a motion by Healy, second by Kettering, to approve the mosquito abatement program contract. Further discussion. All in favor say aye.
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 Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion carries. People getting tonight?
Oh, I, we, for this moment.
Wonderful, thanks for stopping by.
Thank you.
Your busy time is starting.
Yes. Thank you. I look good for mosquitoes or, uh. Well, I think the weeds are gonna be hard to keep off with this year, after last year. They're already started to bloom.
Moving on to item nine, memorandum of understanding to quarantine staff.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Everybody get a chance to read the MOU in the packet. What this basically does, I'll kinda go through a little bit, which is that, uh, this, this MOU, uh, we agreed with a very sacred hospital, they, as most of you maybe know, they bought the Skyline. So, I like, a lot of my cross one, uh, for better people, for your. So what across, sorry. But anyway, the idea was that if they needed to have people, they had surgeries, they'd handle it. So we had an agreement with them, so it's basically the first responders. In Yankton, fire, law enforcement, EMS, uh, surgery rescue, uh, any, you know, the small departments. If they have somebody that gets, comes in contact with somebody to where they need to be tested, and have a place to quarantine fourteen days for, if they become COVID-nineteen sick, and they're not sick enough to go into the hospital, but yet they need to go somewhere for, they can't be at home. Uh, we do have people who have the capability of going home, so monitoring, having the COVID-nineteen virus. But this gives that opportunity. We have no expensiveness, unless it's one of my people or Steve's people. But the MOU holds the agency responsible, if they put somebody in there, uh, for paying the fee, or do you mean it's a fee of a, a daily rate or a weekly rate, they're responsible for the meals for the person that's in there. The MOU does, uh, is an agreement, signed the, a bear or a person that does their cleaning for the limbs, will clean the limbs after the person. Anyway, it basically just, this was something that we used at the event, somebody would, we come down, hold them, and say, that we wanna make sure that we have something for the first responders. Uh, the only thing that, the reason I brought it in front of you guys tonight is to make you aware of this, but ultimately. Uh, the only thing that, the reason I brought it in front of you guys tonight is to make you aware of this, but ultimately we would be responsible if somebody would. Like, yeah. Uh, so I'm gonna use Lester long day, if somebody's sitting in there and they messed a couple, they had a couple days, we would be as responsible that we could go out for lunch. That was a thing that we kind of had to put in there, that somebody would be ultimately responsible. Uh, and yeah, but anyway, this agreement, it's five-page, six-page document, everybody I sent it out to loved it. Uh, knowing that they have some security there in the event. I just need a motion, uh, for you guys to go ahead and approve this. I'll have the chair, uh, Sherri sign it and I can actually watch signature and the page rate for the chair's office. Why do I, anyway, EMS, once I'm already asking.
Second.
I have a motion by Kettering, second by healy to approve the memorandum of understanding that's been presented. Further discussion, questions for Paul.
Paul, I got a question for you, this is Dan, um, and I kind of read it in there, uh, i- is, if somebody goes in there, are they gonna be getting any type of medical attention, or is somebody gonna be, you know, checking on these people daily, or?
The MOU states that the people that, you know, I'm gonna use Lester again, if Lester will put somebody in there, they need to come up with a means, whether they hire somebody to take care of, do daily checks or do it themselves to make sure this person's okay. The thing to remember is the people going in there aren't necessarily, they may have it, but they're not sick enough to where they need to be hospitalized. So they can't run around and watch TV and do whatever, they just can't leave the building, they're quarantined. So making phone calls, stuff like that, I mean, if they get sick, then they'll have to go to the hospital, but.
Yeah.
Not after.
Yeah, my, my only concern is we just need to make sure that if somebody goes into this facility, that they're being checked on at least once a day, because the last thing we want to happen is somebody goes, maybe they're positive for COVID-19 and have a heart attack or something else happens. And so I just want to make sure that if the county is ultimately responsible, that whoever puts somebody in there, they have to check on them once a day at least, uh, that, that'd be my, that's my only concern, it looks great other than that.
I think if we go through the MOU and actually say, you know, we're only responsible for the. If somebody would be not responsible, also responsible.
It'll be first.
Well, we, that is not it. We have several stories, even the center of our actually approved it also for third people. Make sure everybody's doctor, eyes and deeds. If, if we don't, that's, we, I mean, we're offering the contract, the whole with, say, our heart, but the agency, once they sign us, it's between them and. Well, we want to make sure somebody checks.
Okay, I'm, I'm fine with that, uh, I, when I was in the military, we had a similar circumstance where somebody was, died in the barracks and they were there longer than they should have been because nobody thought it was their responsibility to check on him, and I, and I know that won't happen, but, uh, if, if you say that's gonna happen, I, I believe you, so that was my question, thank you for answering it.
Keep in mind that the people that are being there are likely there because they have family at home that they don't want to get sick, so hopefully their family care.
Yeah, no, I, I under, I understand that, uh, and I, and I totally get it, but w- the county is ultimately responsible, and if somebody goes in there and, and something happens, who is checking on them, and it might, that was answered, so I have no more questions, thank you.
If there are no more questions, we're ready for vote. Alright, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, nay. Motion carries.
I know you guys have, please tell you, any, any quick questions?
I'm seeing a few numbers.
Yes, we've gone up to twelve, enough quotes, that's a lot, we go Friday. Uh, you know, whether that's where we had a webinar on the state of the Ollons this afternoon, and they're starting to see spikes, I get throughout, rural county, uh, and it's all the two weeks after everything opened. So we don't know if that's an indicator or if it's something with a facility that they, you know, I don't know. But we're keeping our close eye, we're perfecting our webinar, is we're meeting with the hospital, actually, we're helping with the hospital right now. Getting ready, next few days to start doing the testing with the, uh, secret citizens, uh, and stuff like that, giving resources, tests and stuff like that, though. Hopefully that process. Or people that I, I ask people, I know they don't like doing, but, where this, our thing, I mean, unfortunately, we don't know who may be asymptomatic and I we could all be, everybody in here right now.
Just to reiterate, the mask is to protect others from us, like, necessarily the other way around.
Right, and I know it's, it's, it's a pain, but it's, we'll get through it, we're all here doing it together, but, I don't know, we're going strong. We'll keep going, so, anybody have any questions, the DSO, stop on over, I love that form, by the way. An Excel spreadsheet.
Oh, yeah.
That's pretty cool, so. Any questions, otherwise, I'm out here.
I think.
Thank you. Yep.
Thanks, Paul.
Good night.
Uh, item number ten, next on the agenda is, uh, Commissioner Plumish, surplus opportunity.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chairman, uh, I was, had a, is, is, uh, Mike Savatik still here, did he take off?
Nope, he's gone.
Okay, I had a conversation with him, oh, maybe a week and a half ago, uh, concerning, um, us having an excess road grader that he thought he was gonna, thought might be a good idea to put on, um, an auction and sell it. Um, I also that day had some conversations with several of the township members and just by, uh, coincidence asked them, uh, several of the townships are interested in purchasing, uh, a road grader just because of, you know, they want to keep their road maintenance up. Uh, I know there's a lot more to it than that, but is there any interest, uh, with the fellow county commissioners in giving, um, an option to the townships to purchase that surplus equipment?
They, they, uh, Dan, this is done, they, they can go to the auction.
Well, I, I realize that they could go to the auction, but the way I look at it is, um, that we're helping the townships, you know, if we can, you know, provide them with, you know, a road grader, I'm, I would be certain that we'd, we'd, we're not gonna give it to them, obviously, but I think we could maybe help out some with the cost, because ultimately it's gonna help Yankton County as a whole, and, uh, I just wanted to know if there was any interest in looking at that. If, if not, um, I'll tell those townships, uh, there's no interest, but if there is, I think we could, uh, explore more how to actually do that.
Uh, Patty has indicated we need to advertise for that.
Okay, is that, Patty, would that be something that we could open it up to all townships, or does it need to be opened up to, um, everybody? Um, even private entities, or how, how could that work, transferring county property to, you know, basically another government entity?
I don't know, maybe. I know it has to be, um, legally, it has to be to the public. We have declared surplus and then, um, it goes out for bid.
Okay, so we'd have to give, uh, every, everyone an opportunity? Townships and cit, private citizens alike?
Yes.
Okay. That was my question, and then that would be like sealed bids or something along those lines?
Yes.
Okay. Alrighty.
Anything else with that one, ma'am?
No, ma'am.
Alright, thank you. Moving on to item number eleven, mission meeting organization. In the packets, um, the wording, I believe this is modeled off the city of Yankton. That's correct, yeah, so, um, Assistant State's Attorney Lily, at the, uh, make that straight, uh, has let, did some research, and at our last meeting, we touched on public comment and is that, um, what for commissioners to speak during public comment? Um, or is there time to speak during the meeting, um, et cetera? And there was, there is a word that, um, she has taken from the city of Yankton to give an example of how some entities, uh, give guidance, uh, for what is said during public comment. Uh, we are very unique, we have two public comments, uh, during our meeting, and I think that needs to be revisited as well. Uh, so one, we need to discuss public comment. And two, we need to discuss things ongoing through our, our meetings. And to prevent, uh, personal attacks, et cetera, during the meetings, and to keep our discussion about county business, uh, not county personnel. So at this time, I will open it up to the floor to give your opinions on how you see, uh, public comment going forward in our meetings, because so far it can be pretty contentious during those time periods, um, and I just don't think that reflects very well on our county or our commissioners. If anyone would like to jump in.
I know issue heal, therapy, read something similar at the beginning of, of a comment. The public comment portion. I hope we want to read this every meeting. Certainly, maybe for a while, or at least something like this handy as a reference of, if we get periodically, we could ask questions, how someone would respond. Part of that is why we can't, it's not the agenda.
They probably put tests on on their words, that's probably part of, they put that in there for, you know, pre-meeting, just for people to. That's where they're on the website, that sort of shows, for the city commission, this just shows on every agenda.
Sure.
Under their public comment, uh, Yankton School District also has one. Um, it's different, but they also have it on every agenda, um. As I said at the last meeting, I went to every county commission website in the state of South Dakota, um, very few that even mentioned anything about public comment. Um, but again, depending on, you know, what issues there were, so I stayed vocal, which was, this is how the city handled it. And so it is modeled after their, their. What could do that?
Are there any commissioners opposed to putting something like this on our agenda as a guide to keep, uh, public comment focused on a topic?
I support.
I, I'm not a, I'm not against it, definitely, but what happens if, you know, uh, somebody gets up and continues to personally attack, you know, what, what happens then? You know, I, I guess maybe we could add something to the effect of, yeah, I'm, I'm fine with what it says here, but maybe we should add something to the effect if, if an individual, an individual speaking, um, conducts personal attacks, the rest of their speaking time is forfeited and the chair shall have them stop speaking and sit down. I mean, maybe we, if, if we're gonna add that, maybe we should add another portion to, so if somebody does break these rules, then their public comment time is, is concluded.
My, my hesitancy to make this too long is that it gets long and no one reads it anyway after that point. Um, if we get somebody up here who is doing that and personally attacking, and I don't mind someone standing up there and saying, you know, you're, you're not doing a very good job, it is for everything you stand for, that's fine. But when they start personally attacking, um, I think that's where the, the line is drawn. Um, and certainly at that point, they should be stopped, and they should be asked to stop speaking, sit down, and possibly the next time, they can't speak for a public comment. We would all like to think we all know how to act in public and we all know how to stay on task and, and focused. Um, essentially, our society today, it is not like that.
You know, my, my only concern is, you know, we, we did our mission statement to kind of correct some behaviors, that didn't work. We did a, a county code of conduct to correct some behaviors, that didn't work. And, and now we're looking at doing this, which, which I agree with them all, but, you know, what happens when somebody gets up and, uh, during public comment and starts personally attacking somebody? You know, it's really up to the person running the meeting, and I think they should have the authority to just say your time is finished and go sit down, and, and really, I think that would, that would take care of this, I mean, if their time is forfeited and they're done, that might be the best, uh, best thing.
Yes, Gary. I think you're looking for an example. I think the perfect example was when you were chairman last year and the mayor came in here with his police officers and started beating up on one of the commissioners, asking him to resign on a cartoon, I think that probably was a perfect example with, uh, somebody from another, uh, not even a county official, came in and supposedly, so, I'd say that's your perfect example to use.
Well, we're gonna bring up examples, I think we should, uh, probably, uh, bring up, uh, those in your examples, you know.
And I might say to you that the mayor was the one who first started it.
So, so at this point. At this point, we are trying to figure out. We are trying to figure out how to end it.
Hey, all of those two people.
Okay, so we need to figure out how to move forward and work together as a team.
I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't agree with Dan if it was, uh, uh, one sentence in on the end that says, yeah, if somebody isn't following the, the guidelines that the, the juror, uh, can cancel the revenue or their time.
Well, sure, most, sure, the person wants those to be, I guess, uh, another thing that, what about comments to commissioners before and after the meetings, uh, I just had a threat right before the com, county commission meeting tonight by one of the commissioners, and I'll mention your name, Joey Ely, that you threatened to break my legs, uh, you wanted to deny that, Joe? That you stood out here and threatened to break my legs? If I, you think your parents are in a political game? You, you threatened to break my legs, just right before this meeting started, didn't you?
I didn't use my mother for your.
Didn't you, you, you threatened to break my legs, didn't you?
I know, I know.
No, you weren't, wasn't, he didn't threaten to break your legs. Go ahead and deny it. Just remember.
So I do agree with Dan and, um, Commissioner Plumish, you want to add that line, are you good with that, Commissioner Plumish?
Um, yeah, I, I, I didn't have the exact wording, but, but I, I feel that, uh, that would be appropriate, um, something to the effect of if you make a personal attack, your time is forfeited, um, something to that extent, I would be fine with.
Okay, so the majority of the commissioners are good with adding this, I will work with Mrs. Lily to, um, add one more sentence to this and we'll put it on the agenda for the meetings coming forward.
And, and Madam Chairman, if I may, I think this should extend to all county boards, you know, county commission, planning commission, drainage, all of that, uh, it, it shouldn't just be for this board, it should be for, for really all of them, and so if we could, could make it to co- I, I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't hear.
Yeah, I said agreed, that's.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Okay. So the other thing is we have two, uh, opportunities for public comment during our meeting, do we want to continue with two opportunities for public comment?
Yes.
Are there any other opinions with keeping two opportunities for public comment?
I, I can't remember, uh, I'm not sure it was, but I can't remember. Probably any, I mean, at the last one, for, for the last public comment.
Yeah, there's been very few.
It certainly like moving, when we moved it to the beginning of the meeting. I certainly like moving, when we moved it to the beginning of the meeting, the final public comment. It's come ago, I guess, for me. I think typically during the item on the agenda, it was more that we try to accept public comment on that item. Have it at the end. I'd say I can go either way. Kind of difficult with the current environment that we're in.
I guess I like having two public comment periods. They have never really taken up a large amount of time. It shows our openness and our willingness to hear our constituents. And not everybody, you know, if somebody gets off work at six, they can't make it here to give us a public comment, but they could stay a little bit later and have one at the end. I suppose it would be different if we were having thirty-five minute public comments where it was taking a long time, but I don't feel that that's been an issue, and to offer citizens an opportunity to address us with their concerns, I guess I feel it's important. And I'm in favor of keeping both public comment in place at this time. Thank you.
Commissioner Swenson, did you have any? So general consensus, we keep two going forward. All right, anything else for commission meeting organization? Anything we need to change on our meeting, how it flows, or the order or anything? All right, we will move past item eleven. I will work with the state attorney's office to give the final wording and then give that to everyone who wants a meeting to be counted. Item twelve, second reading of Yankton County Commission adoption of proposed amendments to Yankton County Ordinance Twenty Twenty, ordinance number twenty dash six.
This is the second reading and ordinance adopting amendments to zoning ordinance Twenty Twenty for Article, Article One, restriction. Article Two, application district regulations. Article Six, low density rural residential district, R one. Article Seven, moderate density rural residential district, number two. Article Eight, high density rural residential district, R three. Article Ten, commercial district. Article Sixteen, nonperformance. Article Eighteen, planning commission. And Article Nineteen, order of adjustment thereto hereby establishing zoning regulations for Yankton County, South Dakota, and providing for the administration enforcement and thereof, and for the repeal of all resolutions of ordinances in conflict wherever. Whereas Yankton County adopted ordinance number Twenty Twenty and February eighteen, Twenty Twenty thereof, and whereas the Yankton County, South Dakota Board of Commissioners needs a necessary for the purpose of promoting health, safety, general welfare of the county to amend ordinance Twenty Twenty. Whereas Yankton County adopted zoning ordinance Twenty Twenty, they have that law right, S D C L, seven dash two. First reading was made, fifth, second reading is today.
This is on the agenda for seven o'clock. It is six about fifty-five. We need to wait five minutes for seven.
I'm sure.
Yep, Denver, want to take a five-minute break?
Sure. Almost ready.
I have a motion and a second for a five-minute break for the discussion. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay. Motion carries, we are now. All right, I entertain a meeting to connect, uh, go back to the session. I have a motion by Swenson, second by Healy, to go back into session for the discussion. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay. Motion carries, we'll back into regular session. So we are at seven o'clock. It is the second reading of the Yankton County Commission adoption of proposed amendments to Yankton County Ordinance Twenty Twenty, ordinance number Twenty dash six. At this time, we will open it up for public comment. Are there any folks who would like to make a public comment?
We just want to reiterate what I said earlier, hey, hey, dude, give us the public comment, hey? It was this, this, and this, and this. The fun, Dr. Watkins on the screen right now, boy, no words. They don't have the physical what this, and this, and this is. It's this guy, or this guy, or this guy. We need to have a more public forum for people to ask questions. Maybe even more publicity. Let's pay more dollars than newspaper, keep them afloat. And let's say, okay, this is going to change this, this could change this. Keep the public informed of what we're doing. And have those people meet, come up and make a noise about what does this mean? They will know, or else I'll have a reference to go back to, to find it out. Okay, this was in the paper on this day. They go back to that paper, they get it all, and look it up. And how, we are better than standing out here in public. And what you're trying to do, to try to find out, people go and complain. Because those that like complaining will come in here and complain. And those that are wondering and questioning things will have answers to tell the people they talked to at coffee. They are, that's not right, this is what they know. That's all I'm saying, thank you.
I have a question for Mr. Gleick, if you don't mind.
Go ahead.
What, is there anything in particular about this zoning change that you don't agree with?
Well, for example, Joe was telling you that they're going to change some of the changes in the residential areas down here, where they can allow taller buildings and wired buildings, a lot, a lot, without having to have a variance. In this case, the neighbors don't need to be informed that this building is going to be done until it's already up and blocking the neighbor's view, or wind, or whatever. This is the concern we had back in two thousand and three when the zoning ordinance was rolling up.
So your concern is with us raising the sidewall height? That's your concern?
That's part of it, yes.
Okay, is there any other concerns?
Well, I'm certainly wondering what these changes are for the livestock. We put that mission into a paper.
I don't think this one deals anything at all with livestock whatsoever.
It's such a menace to the emergency zoning ordinance Twenty Twenty, etc. of that adds on the bottom of this. I thought that you guys already passed this emergency zoning ordinance file back.
This doesn't have anything to do with temporary zoning at all, at this point. At the last meeting, we walked through every change that was made. I went through and read almost every line item of what we were changing.
But see, I wasn't here in the last meeting, I had to spend more.
Yeah, and so.
If we put it print, then I got to read it the next day.
And it's online and available.
I've been looking for it, I don't have it yet.
Yeah, it was in the first graphic for that meeting, and it showed the red lines, everything. Yep, and it showed the red lines, everything that was changed. And so they would have been the same in planning and zoning, it's a matter of hearing it there as well. And historically, these changes aren't published in the newspaper. I don't remember ever seeing specific changes published in the almost twelve years I've been there. So that's been proven at all.
We have a communication, they certainly do it for everybody. And I'm making a suggestion. I hear the city's got a private meeting room where all equipment works. So everyone can hear anything, point A, point B, and good feedback here. Maybe we can borrow a couple of units, you guys, and you could tell that.
Bob, I have to agree with you. Schools are closed, churches are closed, grocery stores, social distancing. Congress is outback. I agree with you. Why do these things have to be pushed through tonight? Why can't they wait? Why can't they wait? Or is there some kind of a secret agenda?
Well, I'm just saying, this is a public forum. They told to have all of these changes and all that stuff. And six chairs, representatives of the public, when I'm not going to come down, but we're not going to be on the meeting. That's every time I can get every announcement you guys put in, they're limited seating available. And so I mean that. Let's get more people in there. Let's not have me talking. Let's have a lot of people talking. We'll find out, they can go lots quicker. We might have to do more grumpier sessions now. And one thing I bother the best, maybe you're the person to shut up, to think five minutes recess if they want. No, because you got, they're talking in empty rooms for very long. That's just my, anybody else? Thank you for your time.
Would anyone else like to make a public comment? All right, and no one inquired to call in? At this time, public comment is closed, so we're going back to the commission for discussion. Is there further discussion on the proposed amendment?
Yes, Madam Chairman, if I may?
Go ahead.
Yeah, this is something we've been discussing for well over a year, Commissioner Healy and myself. In addition, when I served on the zoning and planning board with Mr. Kettering, something that we ran into a lot was people want bigger accessory structures, and they want taller ones in our residential areas. And I don't think we've, correct me if I'm wrong, Joe, I don't think one person has spoke against this in the last year plus. I think this is a good thing for our community because it's going to cut down on the amount of variances and allow residents to have larger accessory structures, which is a good thing.
Now, reiterating, I haven't heard any emails or phone calls regarding this in the, in the, they give, I've talked to several people who have asked for larger structures. Yeah, I mean, the important thing would be look at the variance it's granted in the last five years, it's for larger accessory structures. So, we're granting them anyway, I think it's nice.
Comments?
If there's no more comments, man. If, if there's no more comments, Madam Chairman, I'd make a motion, uh, sure, uh, I guess, do we, we need a motion to approve this?
Yes.
So I guess I'd make a motion to approve the second reading of the Yankton County Commission adoption of proposed amendments to Yankton County zoning ordinance 2020, ordinance number 20 dash six. Is that a proper motion, Mr. Vedder, or do you want me to say something different?
No, he said yes, that would be proper.
Okay, I'd move approval.
I have a motion on the floor, and I have a second.
Good.
I have a second by Kettering, so motion by Clemish, second by Kettering, to approve the proposed amendments before us further discussion. Roll call vote, please.
Clemish?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Swenson?
No.
Healy?
Yes.
Both?
Yes. Amendments are adopted. At this time, I entertain a motion to go into Board of Adjustment. I have a motion by Swenson, seconded by Healy to go into Board of Adjustment for the discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion carries, we are now in Board of Adjustment, item thirteen is variance for Lisa Wormwood.
Hi there, um, I'm here to ask for exactly what you just passed in, uh, the amendment to the ordinance, um, which is fourteen-foot sidewalls for an accessory building, um, that we're building on our property. It's simply like, for, like, uh, Mr. Clemish said, to have a larger accessory building, um, allow for, you know, the structure to hold more and, um, support a camper and, um, other things that we plan on using it for.
Are there any questions for the applicant at this time? All right, hang on just a second, I'm going to open it up for public comment. So hang with us, Lisa.
Yep.
Would anyone like to make a public comment on this application? All right, there being no public comment, public comment is closed. We'll bring it back to the commissioners for discussion. There were none. May I ask, I, I think the vote was seven or two votes, the reason for the two votes against? Did they state their reasons for voting against?
I think those, those two vote against everything.
No, that's not true.
I, I, I don't know, because they didn't, they didn't explain the reason why.
I don't, I don't remember any contention.
Okay, that's what I was looking for, was there any contention?
Yeah, there was, yeah, there was no reason. And, Madam Chairman, it's important to realize, we've, we have, um, approved many, many, many of these type applications in that area, and just like, uh, Ms. Woodward said, this is the exact reason why we're changing our zoning ordinance, because there's, there's a, a need from the citizens of that part of the community to have larger structures and higher sidewall heights.
But at this time, we still need to go through the process because it's not, not.
Yes, ma'am, yep.
Lisa, if I remember, was your building, you had a lower pitched roof on this, if I remember right.
Yep, it'll be a, a four twelve pitch, so it'll actually, the roof height will be very low, especially in comparison to some other buildings that have a, have those twelve-foot sidewalls, but have very, very high roof pitches on them.
Further questions on the application? It looks like all the criteria has been met according to our section nineteen.
That is good.
So at this point, if there's no further discussion, I would entertain some type of call for.
Second.
I have a motion by Kettering, seconded by Clemish, to approve the variance for Ms. Wormwood, for the discussion.
Kettering?
Yes.
Clemish?
Yes.
Yes.
Swenson?
Yes.
Yes. Variance is approved. Thanks for joining us.
Thanks for your time.
Next item on the agenda is item fourteen, the variance in plat for Douglas Zimmer.
Can you hear me?
We sure can, thanks for joining us.
Yes, yeah, I guess I'm here, um, because, um, I am trying to make, uh, larger lots, um, for a more buildable and attractive building site up on Nottingham. And I think I went from, uh, six lots to, down to four lots to make them larger.
So at this time, do the commissioners have any questions for the applicant before we open it up to public comment? All right, so just hang with us, we're going to take public comment if we have any. So anyone in the audience here to make a public comment. There being no public comment, public comment is closed. Commissioners, do you have any further questions for the applicant?
One of the things that I, I see as a positive about this is, is, and Mr. Zimmer, correct me if I'm wrong, these lots are all prior to zoning, so, um, they were planted before zoning took place, and what he's doing is actually trying to get these lots more into conformance, uh, with our zoning. That, would you say that's correct? Okay.
Yes, that, that is correct, yes.
Thank you.
So in the application, it looks like the requirements for section nineteen are outlined in the document. Are there any concerns?
No, and I'd point out, uh, neighboring lots in that same neighborhood are also maybe not conform to five acre.
So at this time, if there's no further discussion, I would entertain a vote.
I move approval of the variance for, as you say, were based on.
A second act motion.
I have a motion by Healy, seconded by Clemish, to approve the variance in plat for Mr. Zimmer, for the discussion. Do you mean a separate motion for the plat?
Like, yes, a separate motion.
Okay, so. I, all right, thank you for the clarification. So our motion, and I'll clarify, is for the variance at this point. We will then approve the plat afterwards. Discussion on approving the variance. Roll call vote to approve the variance only.
Healy?
Yes.
Clemish?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Swenson?
Yes.
Yes. But this time, we'll discuss the plat. And if there's no, no further discussion on the plat, we entertain a motion.
Move approval of the plat, Clemish?
The motion by Clemish, seconded by Healy, to approve the plat, for the discussion. Roll call vote.
Clemish?
Yes.
Healy?
Yes.
Swenson?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you, sir, for joining us. Have a good evening.
Yeah, thank you.
Next on the agenda, uh, item fifteen is a seat for Daniel Lehman. Thank you for joining us, sir.
Thank you.
All right, go ahead and discuss your application, please. This is for gravel pit? Yeah, so it's having those. So this is a non-tourship. So at this time, do the commissioners have any questions for the applicant? All right, I will have a public comment. Anyone like to make a public comment?
Lady up, township board, I'd like to speak in support of Mr. Lehman's gravel pit. I think this is a good, long-term, um, aspect. You know, we all know how much gravel is needed to have certain levels and stuff, and other kids. On the east side of the town over here, it'd be great, you know, none of the timber bridges that have to handle eight thousand pounds, we're done. So to have this, another, better than that, so to speak, I think is a very good thing. It gives opportunity for farmers in the area to have another, for building sites, for, for buildings, uh, gravel and rock and clay, what happened. So this is a developed economic, political aspect that is very probably positive, I believe. Bon Township Board has, it's for me. We've worked out agreements. I'm currently working with LTA, I'm getting some signage. You know, the township was to get some signage to help all of the aspects, since this pit is in Pendle Vale, to notify the public of what's going on. So I really encourage a favorable vote on this, in all township, because it's important.
Any other one, any other public comment?
We're down to twelve. Uh, I think it would be great to approve conditions for this for their recent greenade, uh, adjustment, or do you need this, or a two-foot gravel cushion, and it needs a concrete floor, which would be my two hundred and twenty feet tall. And I'm glad I'm not paying for it. But every side, another access point. It saves a couple of miles because it's a, um, US hit. It saves a lot of wear and tear, because you have to drive around through the Aton or come across, but you can't come across a bridge. But it gives it, and everybody else on that side has a number of access to another location for the charity. And I can wholeheartedly agree with you, great, given the C P, and to your.
Other public comment?
I just have a concern, I don't think that's a good thing, or is, later, if you're in a level, fire, and my house, or it's all, I don't want to stay at home, I'm a patient, I'm really not, anyway. Um, I just have a concern that it would be done on a row of, row of writing wood, and I got tired of leaving all the tension, and the burn, and that, um, situation. Imagine if it reaches a little late, isn't that, but you don't need, can I call them in here, or tell me, and ask them, or I would be happy to call, or, you know, when it's going on. He said, well, if you guys license and, and, like, don't be telling me, it's a little late, you're, yeah. All right, it's, you know, I see the other firm, things like that, and four hundred miles, I'm sorry. It's very much time, because otherwise I'd have therapy, it's a railway.
And, ma'am, could you state your name for it?
Yeah, you were, because I just, all they asked it, it was, you know, I'll be, I'm hired, so. Present it, and, um, it's such a thing from, from me upstairs, I got for, that was first one in last meeting, but it happened, it got missed. Thanks for Tom, I don't know, I don't fully get, like, wasn't, I'm concerned, except that I made it and all that. I don't know, it was a little bit on the first one. Which is the same kind of news. If she got it on this one, but not that one.
Other comments? All right, we'll, we'll, we'll close, public comment is past, making, my lips so wet, I stutter. Bring it back to the commission for questions.
I have a question for Ms. Lily, if we could. It looks like we have an agreement from Volin Township. Would we need to make that a condition of the conditional use permit for that to be in effect? I mean, we certainly want to take care of our township roads. What's your thought on that?
I think they already asked that they get the, uh, get that from Volin Township. As long as they have that, um, I think, I'm, I'm guessing everything has been um, approved, that would need to get approved by Volin Township. They're all nodding their heads, so.
Okay, so, so, Chad, we, we should make that a, as a condition of the conditional use permit, is that, that's what you're telling us?
I don't, I don't know that it's a condition of the conditional use permit.
Well, but, but, okay, say, say, if we've approved this without making that agreement a condition, because this is a county permit, not a township permit, correct? So if, if there was a, a misunderstanding with the township, and that wasn't a, we actually had the same thing happen, or similar thing happened in Mission Hill Township, where the township had an agreement with the gravel pit, and then there was a misunderstanding later, and it was said, well, it's a county permit, and since that wasn't a condition of the conditional use permit, it was basically unenforceable. That's my concern, so, so I guess, asking you to protect Volin Township, would it be better to have that as a condition of the conditional use permit?
Who gives that, right? I mean, who is the township that says that?
The township, or.
The township.
Yeah.
I think as long as they adhere to the agreement.
Okay, yep.
When do they?
I mean, you, you remember, Joe, what happened with Mission Hill Township in a similar situation, and we, and we want to make sure we protect our townships. That, that's, that's all I had.
There's an agreement between Mission Hill.
Yeah, okay. And Mr., Mr. Epp, would you, would you like us to do that? Would you like us to have that as a condition in this permit, or, or not?
I do not, Mr. Clemish, I, I do not believe that that is necessary.
Okay.
The road hall agreement that Mr. Lehman signed with us, we had the Towns and Township Association lawyer read that. So therefore, therefore, I believe if there would be any, um, adherence here, uh, all we'd have to do is go back with them, because they are familiar with it. That is our fallback. We, is why we have those as our insurance, you know, they're part of our insurance. So I do not believe this would be necessary onto this.
Okay, thank you.
The conditions already attached by the planning and zoning include a road hall agreement with the Yankton County Highway Superintendent. A hall route approved by the Highway Superintendent. Red concessions for these routes shall be completed prior to approval, and at the applicant's cost, a flatline development permit, if needed, was that needed? Was not needed, so that is not going to be included, and say one hundred yards from neighboring property lines. So the concern that was raised about the cemetery in the railroad is that to be cleared up by the hundred yard distance.
One of them's already wiped out. One of them, the one is already wiped out, out of, almost, well, order of the way to town, not even. Not quite that far, I mean. I'm just saying, don't wipe out the other one, you know?
You have an agreement with the cemetery? So are you part of the cemetery board? So you would need to speak with them to see what I remember. Other concerns raised during the planning and zoning?
After the planning and zoning meeting, Madam Chairman, the town of Volin, from what I understand, did a resolution to not allow the gravel trucks to go through that. Gary, do you have a copy of that or? Mr. Vedder?
That one, I'm not sure was in the packet. I don't think we've received.
Yeah, and, and I did speak with the town board of Volin and, and they asked us to, to not allow truck traffic through the town of Volin. And I believe they passed a resolution for that as well. But if we stick to the hall route that we have established, it should be fine. But just to reiterate what the township board of Volin said is, we could maybe add that as a condition. That happened after the planning and zoning meeting, though.
And that is part of their prerogative as, as the town. That's not part of our, our requirement.
I think that was discussed, but, yeah, thank you.
Everybody's in agreement of that.
And then the, uh, the Volin agreement is part of this packet and. So it should, I mean, it would be included. It's in here signed.
And the bridge is then inspected. Many acres of bridge inspected. Further questions, discussion? All right, if none, I would entertain a motion on the application.
Move approval of the commitment and application.
I have a motion by Peddering, seconded by Healy, to approve the Weeman application. Based on findings that examined. For the discussion.
Madam Chairman, the only thing I'd like to add, as I know it's a part of the packet and everything, but I, I would like to just add, for the sake of our small town in Volin, that gravel trucks must stay out of, off of the roads of the city of Volin. That's the only thing I'd like to add, speaking with the township board.
Right? So that's, that's a statement that's not changing the motion.
Well, I, I guess I would like that added to the motion because I was contacted by the township board. They showed up at the planning commission, expressed their concerns. And then a few days after that, the town of Volin signed a resolution, you know, to keep these trucks off of their road. And the reasoning it was is they can't afford to repair them if damage happens. I don't see it as an issue because the hall route is different as well. But I, I don't see the harm in adding that in to protect our small towns.
Okay, in order to change the motion, you must make a motion to amend it. And it must receive a second. And we must vote on it.
I make a motion to amend the motion and add that gravel trucks need to stay out of the town of Volin unless authorized by the town board.
Second.
I have a motion by Clemish and a second by Healy to amend the motion by stating that gravel trucks cannot go through the town of Volin unless approved by the township or the town board. Further discussion? We'll do a roll call vote on that amendment first. Clemish? Yes. Healy?
Yes.
Peddering?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Yes. So now we will vote on the amended motion, which is to approve the conditional use permit based on findings of fact. With the added clause that trucks are not to go through the town of Volin unless approved by the Volin Board. Further discussion? Roll call vote. Peddering?
Yes.
Healy?
Yes.
Clemish?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Yes. You're welcome. Have a good evening and thanks for coming in. The last forwarded adjustment item is item number 16, a variance for Kelly. Oh.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir. Thanks for joining us.
Perfect.
Please tell us about your application.
Um, I would like to, I'm trying to apply for a side variance so that I may build a building and attach it to the building there now. The topography of the area I have and the location of the right of way and everything is kind of cutting into everything. So I'd like to build a 40 by 50 building behind the original building that is there.
Are there any questions for Mr. Alp at this point, before we open up for public comment?
Yep, Mr. Alp, there, there was a, a previous variance on this property, was there not?
Yes, um, yes, there was for the building that is originally there now. There was a variance for that, but it was a front variance, not a side variance. Um, the land had been boughten before I moved here. The land had been boughten to the north of me and that would shorten up my variance for the lot line to build a, this building.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll open it up for public comment. Would anyone like to make a comment? There are no public comment. Public comment is closed. We'll bring it back to the commission. Further discussion on the application?
Memory from the feed from the planning and zoning deed. That lot line would move at one point, two of that city person to start here. What Mr. Alp would like to do is, would not further than that.
Any other discussion or questions for the applicant? It looks like section 16 is, or 19, as the statement is outlined. For us, all of the mailings were none. And it was a manual, don't worry about the firm, it's only more. So at this time, if there are no further discussion or questions for the applicant, I would enter a vote on the application.
Move approval of the Alp, Peddering, and West.
I'll second that motion.
Uh, Mr. Peddering, each of us, so I have a motion by Healy, a second by Peddering to approve the variance based on findings of fact for Mr. Alp. Further discussion? Roll call vote. Healy?
Yes.
Peddering?
Yes.
Clemish?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Yes. Jerry and Supra, thanks for calling in, sir. Have a good evening.
Thank you. You guys have a great night.
I'm entertaining a motion to go back into regular session. I have a motion by Swenson, seconded by Healy, to go back into regular session for the discussion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Oppose, nay. Motion carries. We are now in regular session. Item 17, Whitecranes Estate, flat or lots 47, 48, 55, 56, and 57.
As we stated, this is a Crespe Home subdivision in the northeast corner of section 21, pound 93 north, range 56 east.
Are there any questions on the plan? I'm entertaining a motion.
Move approval of the plats. Clemish?
Second.
I have a motion by Clemish, seconded by Peddering, to approve the plats for lots 47, 48, 55, 56, and 57. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, nay? Motion carries. Flat is approved. Item number 18, I'll let you read this one.
Same subdivision, lot 75, 76, Crespe Home subdivision in the northeast corner of section 41, thousand 93 north.
Are there any questions about this flat?
Move approval, Clemish?
I have a motion by Clemish, seconded by Healy, to approve the Whitecranes Estate flats for 75 and 76. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, nay? Motion carries, flat to approve. I have a 19, A Properties flat.
Last quarter is lot 6 and Bayford Estates located in the west half of the south, 12.91 acres of the south half of the southwest corner of section 7. And in the west half of the west half of section 18, by north of highway 52, except private areas known as tram 7th edition and except lots 1 to 2 of parcel A and further excepting parcels B and C, like Bay and G. All being the pound 93 north, range 56, class.
Any questions or any discussion on this one? Entertaining motion?
Move approval.
I have a motion by Healy.
Second, Clemish?
Second by Clemish, approve the Bay Properties flat. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, nay? Motion carries, flat is approved. But this time, I entertain a motion to go into ditch four. I have a motion by Swenson, seconded by Healy, to go into ditch four. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, nay? Motion carries, we are now in ditch four. Item number 20, 740.
So I don't plan on taking any action against this evening. I just wanted to, to review what we're discussing. So I met with some of the landowners, specifically along the Clay Ditch, all lateral. Actually doesn't affect the first extension, but, um, there's, there's some beaver activity, a little sloughing and it's a tree that they're looking to have removed. But I met with, with a few of the landowners, I'm not afraid, and trying to kind of get a somewhat of a plan. And then we're, we're going to get some bids out there. And then the, end this through the circle back. Get more of the landowners along that way, make sure everybody don't stay h. Try to get something to do.
Do you need to know how much is in that one?
I have that somewhere. So.
Which ditch is this?
This is the Clay Ditch. You can follow on lateral, and it's actually a lot of it is all. So there was some confusion I guess at the start of which was the Clay Ditch was all. I think I've got all the paths I need. But it's a ball of land, so there's 28,000 roughly in there. Some of the work would, so the Volin lateral starts at 148, leading to 306 and 307. And. That was roughly 2 miles. And then becomes a Clay Ditch. And then it turns and it's out. For another mile and a half or so, and then it's like. And that's fortunate, too bad. Some of the funding likely would come out of the Clay Ditch. Where it gets, there's some stuff. That's why it came out there and a couple beaver dams. But I would suspect some of that, this one, Clay Ditch, might have been, maybe a lot of that involved myself. But, Ray, you have anything you want to say about it?
Eddie, would you know how much? Tax of that, let me just, oh, that taxation in 1890, I think this was the first. Do you know roughly how much is 400 for that taxation?
Yeah, I believe it was at $0.
So that was roughly.
And we went to 100% taxation of the Volin lateral. You had the 20, 90. So that 28 should have all came from that.
Those two miles on the Volin lateral are requiring serious attention. Some of the factors that are along there, that have heightened, most of them, have got to exist. So it's going to take substantial finances to get these things done. Another entity, a monitoring firm, especially there, who we have very productive talk. We may have to, as 20 owners, pay a viper, so to speak, and pull some money out to get something on so people realize that action in the pavement and more people get involved with it. I really am curious, this gentleman sitting right here probably knows where the bottom of that ditch actually is. And I really would be curious to see how much taxation is in there because nothing's been done for so long. If I could, if I was 148 through the last two years, the amount of revenue I would have made off of that, with the peanuts compared to what it costs to clean that waste, we are forebears, say. Those people lived in part times two, and they put forth the money. This time, we step up. So that's all I gotta say. That, that lateral is in dire need of serious attention. And I think it will come out, we need that three others to turn through that accretion.
No, I don't believe so. We just need to get, get some bids and see where, where they come in. There are some way. There's some other individuals along the Clay Ditch that would like, and it's probably long to turn. But it would tie into what Ray says. There, there are no original ditch plans and elevations, so anybody. So once we can get these things cleaned, well, we might, yeah, I think it is ultimately up to the, the landowners to clean it in. But it may warrant some sort of, shots, maybe. Make sure that we can have that progress. So we're going to be limited wherever the Clay Ditch meets Clay County, we can't move deeper than that. So.
Something I'd like to add to this.
Well, yeah, what's your? Oh. Robert, buddy Frank, could you put your hand up, please? Pull higher so they can see it. I've known him buddies since high school. Didn't know his name was Robert, 20 years later. He probably knows more about the ditches and creeks and waterways in Yankton County, Clay County than, he probably forgot more than all this, no. And he comes to religiously to the meetings. And he comes to religiously to the meetings. Has this, he's like an encyclopedia, and somebody when he's gone, we're going to be sad shape. But I ask you, Commissioner Joe Healy, have you been using Robert Buddy Frank's expertise? Because you're half his age, and you grew up on the other end of the county, not the Wettekinnin, but he did, so have you been using his expertise?
Yeah, exactly.
Good, thank you. Thank you, Buddy, for coming every time I get here, every time, don't you? Thanks.
Andy, did you have anything you want to say on that lateral?
Any further comments before we go back into regular session? Thank you. I entertain a motion to go back into regular session.
Move. Okay.
Most by Swenson, second by Healy to go back into regular session. Discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries, we are back in regular session for item number 21, employee handbook, Mr. Oakland from Alternative H R D.
I assume you can hear me okay?
Yes, sir, we can hear you, hopefully you can hear us.
All right, thank you. And just, yeah, it's good to visit with you on this handbook, I mean, the last couple months, or the last two to three months have been strained for all of us, but glad to be able to talk to you a little bit more about the handbook. I think you have the document where it, and it, I realize it's pretty extensive, and there's a lot of, what I tried to do this draft is make sure that any changes or proposed changes were in red type and are underlined, so that you could tell some of the changes. A lot of the changes in this draft are, I would say, a lot of them anyway, are not significant changes, maybe it's changing wording, updating things, some of them are language changes that I think help quite a bit. There are certainly some policy changes or some things that I've included in here that, some may be a recommendation, but some maybe just wanted to consider or think about whether you want to do that. And I tried to put in a few places to put in a comment or question, but I'm not sure how you would like to proceed, if you want to ask me questions, if, I envision as we go forward with this, with this draft, I mean, whatever gets approved here, I would not see as the final document, because I still think one of the next, or one of the steps is to try to get together again with the department heads and talk through a few additional things with them. There are, I suspect there may be a few additional things and changes recommended coming from, from those meetings or that meeting, but I at least wanted to be able to visit with you and answer questions or ask questions, then we can go through page by page, we can just, however you'd like to proceed.
Yes, totally agree with that, I guess when I was reviewing the document this morning, most of the morning it seemed, that a lot of the changes that were made look like legal changes, this is handbook from 2004, so it's essentially 16 years, federal government additions to our responsibility and such, so I did appreciate a lot of those are added in there.
Yes.
But I do agree, certainly our next step is to take this very first draft to all of the team leaders for their input, because there are some items they've been mentioning that have not been changed in the handbook itself, and then I think once we go through that second phase, then the commissioners need to agree with what the team leaders want to change.
Right.
Then it has to come back to us for our essentially final review, if you will, and for some reason we completely disagreed with something that they have suggested, we really need to know the reason why we disagreed with that.
Right.
So if you're on board with that type of process, I think that's probably a good place to go forward. Do the commissioners have any, I'm sure you all reviewed this, do you have any concerns at this point with what has been added so far?
I'm not going to do the entire thing over yesterday today, you know. I had the, my first thought was you have to have the department heads review it, and when I get talk to the highway department, which is in the way, please, I'm doing, we brought up maybe three or four really good questions, and I think we need to have them sit down and carefully present their thoughts on, and then we go ahead and suggest.
Is that tomorrow? Is it tomorrow?
Yes.
So it's probably going to be too soon to really give them a thorough review, but I think we can discuss, there's been a few things that are highlighted already, and we can kind of bring those up, get them on the radar, and give them a thorough review.
Yeah. Well.
I saw that we added the code of conduct to this, which I think is good. It might be in here, but did we add the mission and vision statement that might be in here, and I just missed it, but is that in here?
Yeah, I don't think that's been added yet, so I'm not being arrested to add at the beginning.
Yeah, if we could, Mr. Oakland, county mission and vision statement would be a good thing, thank you, that's the only thing I have to add.
And those are probably on the website, aren't they?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'll pull them out. I also anticipate once we, and I have not sent this to any of the department heads yet, I wanted to make sure you saw it first, and I know there were some, I know there have been some suggestions from some of the department heads that I have as well, some of those I tried to, that I felt, you know, could be included, I did, there's, I know there's a few that I did not include in here yet, but I thought, once we get to that step, and they get a little bit more input, and have we have a chance to talk through that, yeah, there will certainly be some things there that I think you folks will want to consider, so.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Okay.
Any other questions at this point about the process or what's been done so far while we have Mr. Oakland on the Zoom, I guess, not the phone?
Okay.
All right, so going forward, as Joe mentioned, we'll have a team meeting tomorrow, we will make sure everyone has a copy of what we have, so they can start reviewing and getting their thoughts formulated. Do you want them to contact you directly, or would you like us to gather everything for you?
Well, I think, I think that they could, they could certainly contact me directly, I think what I will also do is shoot them an email, and I will probably encourage their, well, encourage their response that way, but I will, my intention is to follow up with each one with a phone call as well, so once they've had a chance to formulate and read through it a little bit, so.
Great, we will pass that information along to them tomorrow, so they're aware that this is moving forward now.
All right.
All right.
Very good.
Any other questions before we let Mr. Oakland get back to his evening?
Okay.
All right, thank you, sir, for calling in.
All right, thank you.
Appreciate it, have a good evening.
Thank you, thank you.
Bye.
All right, and that goes to the commissioners too, if you have feedback with this, you can either let me know, Mr. Reddell, or you can contact Mr. Oakland directly if you have, I've got marks in my handbook, I know, and I see, so if that's a search, please make it go on, nothing works in getting it to the end of the process, and then you've got the old by the way. We encourage everybody to act sooner. At this time, it is item 22, we are back to our second public comment, and we are at 8 o'clock.
I've got one quick thing for talking about, I'm sure.
Hey, let's let, is there anybody else on there?
I think it just, he had a few there that spoke on. She spoke on the gravel.
All right. Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you. Let me get a brief. I'll have to real loud to take one of them down here, so you can hear me. County has about 1,600 veterans. It is Memorial Weekend, and 22 veterans commit suicide every day, it's been going on for decades. Our pandemic is terrible across the nation. You have heart attacks, car accidents, overdose, take lives, and suicides, as even our local people have canceled their suicide block. The sad thing is, a celebrity actor like Robin Williams commits suicide, and the whole world stops. 22 veterans commit suicide every day, that's 8,020 per year, and nobody bats an eye.
Anyone else here to make a public comment? All right, public comment is closed. We are now at item 23, commissioner updates. Don, I'll let you go ahead.
This morning, Wild Robbie did, Ron, my me try, was told that to get capital letter, self requirement of revenue, discussing reuse valuations to properties, very rough land, due to the proximity to an animal leasing property. And I just, I think it's important that the public knows and understands what the state has said, will happen, will we go follow their guidance and regulations, and looking at the set status of the property. And I got to read through this entire letter, but I would suggest that maybe we schedule it for future meeting, for future discussion, as, and ask the equalization, even up here, and tell us how they see their required responding to this letter.
Anyone else like to make a comment on the letter that was received? And I can certainly read the paragraphs that you want, just so folks understand what it's about. So there's a, there were adjustments made to bare agricultural land, specifically outlined in state law, the board may make adjustment for conditions which affect the productivity of the land, proximity to a feeding operation does not negatively affect productivity, therefore it is not a valid adjustment, the Department of Revenue will not take any action for this year as a result of the reduction down these two appeals, however, if the board continues to make this type of adjustment in coming years, the overall county ag level of assessment will be considered less than 100%, and the equalization factor for, excuse me, for all property classified as agricultural will be increased, a higher equalization factor will increase the taxable value of all bare ag land and all agricultural buildings countywide, they then go on to list the statutes that outline the concern that they are raising here. So we can certainly put this on, ask me if it's a different life, to discuss this letter, and how the county is choosing to respond to it. Anything else for commissioner updates, Don, if you have anything else?
I don't think so.
Commissioner Swenson?
Hello. I'm going to go to executive session.
Uh, as soon as we make the rounds, we will.
I just want to be connected to my phone when we go into executive session, like we were last time, I just remembered. A couple days ago, I had physical threat, and now today, the girl threatened me really to break my legs, I told her, thank you.
Mr. Clemish, did you have anything that you want for the comments?
Yeah, on Monday is Memorial Day, and so I just, I hope everybody takes at least a couple seconds and just remembers those, you know, people that we've lost over the last year or whatnot, and just remember the sacrifices that so many people have made to keep our nation free and to keep it the greatest country on earth, and that is all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Another thing I was just going to share is I did link the caller to the governor today, so she did talk about mainly the $1.25 billion that the state has, and I'm just going to call it COVID cash for lack of a better term, they are still trying to finalize the rules coming with what that money can be used for. The state will be contacting auditors, and they said commissioners can certainly sit in on those calls to talk about what the plat, for things like housing, exactly what Paul talked about tonight, the agreement we made, that type of thing, qualified supplies that we have had to purchase, as a result of this, certainly we worked through our supplies cost to, for your place to have a home, and those are just a few of the things she highlighted, so they're really trying to make a list, and they have to make sure to list the lines, what the county is doing to track, and then of course you have someone auditing to make sure the dollars are spent, how they're supposed to be spent. There was a question, I think it was from the Ha Ha County, about FEMA reimburses 75% whereas this COVID money is 100% reimbursement, so there was a question, can you use this COVID money to cover the 25% that FEMA doesn't cover, and that question, they don't have an answer to yet, and which is going to be FEMA, which is going to be COVID, so, and then the last question I'm going to mention is, one of the commissioners, I can't remember which county, was asked about liability of action and liability of inaction taken by cities and counties during this crisis, and businesses probably as well, it was asked her, she had a feeling on the risk, and of course she referred us to our state attorney's office to evaluate that, but I know the feds are looking at trying to do some type of legislation that would essentially hold us not accountable for decisions we make, or I shouldn't say not accountable, so that we couldn't be held liable for the decisions we make, so, but otherwise, the whole call was about 30 minutes, mainly discussing their plan going forward to get information to the auditors specifically on how to apply for that money, so.
Do you have something?
Go ahead.
We have a working session for planning, it's only scheduled tomorrow night, 7:00. We'll be live streamed, room will be open, and we'll have a limited attendance, and who will work on that first?
7:00.
7:00.
And at this time, I don't have anything else, so we are to our last item, 24. Executive session for litigation pursuant to S D C L 1-25-2, separate three, and personnel issue for S D C L 1-25-2, separate four, I entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Who we go ahead? Okay.
I have a motion by clemish, second by Healy to go into executive session, further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed nay, motion carries, we are now in executive session. Aye, all opposed, may motion carries to the executive session. Can't pull, it's your story through, go, call our phone bill.
He didn't do it, oh, he did. But next time if you want, we can clear out. Does that make sense to do that?
Well, I mean, if you need it.
Oh, we're not going to, we're not going to need to get it until after the election.
All right.
Is there a subject that you, that's the mic, or?
No.
No?
Um, I can't get this to work either, so.
All right, I appreciate it. Thank you. Don, I want to see you. Be all right?
Let's see. So are you going to your vehicle? Or are you going to sit?
I'm just going to be on the phone.
Hey, you're not recording, are you?
Um, I can't record the breakout room, but I can't.
Well, I just, if he's on the phone with executive session, I just don't want anything to be on.
No, um, can you, uh, oh, Gary went upstairs and I need his help.
I'm going with my car. That's okay.
Yeah, send it back down. Yeah.
I'll be putting their emails. It's still up there, so. Should be Dan.
And yours.
Yep.
Okay, I'm, I'm pretty sure it's in there.
Okay.
If not, you can text me or something.
All right, so we have Dan back.
Yes, I'm back, Sherry.
All right, good to go. I would entertain a motion to come out of executive session.
Okay, Quamish.
Motion by Carter and second by Healy to come out of executive session. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. We are now out of executive session.
Then Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we suspend Commissioner Swenson's county email indefinitely due to inappropriate conduct.
I had a motion and a second to suspend Commissioner Swenson's email indefinitely. Further discussion?
Yeah, I mean, could we do like 90 days or 60 days or something? Indefinitely is... That means forever, so I guess.
Well, not necessarily.
Okay.
Further discussion? No call vote. Healy?
Yes.
Kettering?
Yes.
Swenson?
No standing.
Quamish?
Yes.
Go. Yes. Motion passes. Items for next meeting?
Madam Chairman, if I may, we originally, we were going to have public comment on upcoming zoning changes on our meeting tonight, but per state's attorney guidance, they recommended that we not do that. And you got that email correct?
Yeah, they recommended since all of the changes need to go through the planning commission, that is the platform of which you need to entertain public comment.
Yeah, okay. Thank you for clarifying.
So the time for public comment here is when we are doing the official hearings for any proposed amendments. Items for next meeting? For the Department of Labor, yeah, I think that's the only thing I know of this meeting.
Do we have that statement, oh, did you think it said that we run as far as the public comment?
Yeah, adding agenda. So I'm not sure what's the format. No, no, it's adding items to the agenda, family or family. And so it's probably only law with you, just to be disallowable.
Just for informational purposes, will we have a pursuant to the subdivision regulation, I'll say.
Okay. All right, well, if there's nothing else, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Okay.
I have a motion by Kettering, second by Healy to adjourn. Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. We are adjourned.